继续开会啊，呃，我们欢迎商务
We welcome the Secretary for Commerce and Economic Development and its team to brief us on the communications and creative industries. And if necessary, members can submit supplementary written questions and the government will follow up. Secretary, please. Chairman, I will briefly highlight the main areas of work in respect of communications and creative industries in the coming financial year. In broadcasting, the government will continue to promote the development of digital terrestrial television or DTT in Hong Kong. At present, the coverage of the DTT services of the domestic free TV program service or free TV licensees licenses has reached some ninety-nine percent of Hong Kong's population. On free TV, HK Television Entertainment Company Limited launched its new English channel on the thirty-first of March, following its launch of an integrated Cantonese channel a year ago. Another free TV licensee, Fantastic Television Limited, was granted a free TV license on the thirty-first of May last year. Under the license, Fantastic TV is required to launch its integrated Chinese channel no later than the thirtieth of May. Given the recent announcements by the Wolf Holding Limited and High Cable Communications Limited, their government is keeping a close watch on the development. It must be emphasized that the relevant licensees are duty-bound to comply with the relevant laws and license requirements. The Communications Authority will continue to monitor the operations of licensees in accordance with the laws and mechanisms. On digital audio broadcasting or DAB services, the Chief Executive in Council decided on the twenty-eighth of March that DAB services should be discontinued in Hong Kong, and that DAB services provided by Radio Television Hong Kong should also be discontinued within six months or as soon as practicable thereafter. The Director of Broadcasting will consult stakeholders to draw plans to accommodate programs currently broadcast on DAB platform on its AM/FM platform. The Panel on Information Technology and Broadcasting will be briefed on the findings of the DAB review in due course. On telecommunications, the existing assignments of the frequency spectrum in the nine hundred and eighteen hundred megahertz spans for the provision of mobile service will expire between November two oh two oh and September two oh two one. The Communications Authority and we are currently conducting the second round of consultation on the spectrum reassignment arrangements and the method for determining the related spectrum utilization fee. The consultation period will end on the twenty-fourth of April. We expect to make announce the relevant decisions by the end of this year after considering the views of stakeholders. With regard to how the regulation of person-to-person telemarketing calls might be strengthened, recognizing the fact that there are diverse views in the community on this issue, we plan to conduct a public consultation this year to collate opinion from stakeholders and the community with a view to formulating a regulatory mode that suits Hong Kong. Against the backdrop of rapid development of the telecommunications and broadcasting sectors, we see a need to conduct a comprehensive review of the existing regimes under telecommunications and broadcasting ordinances to ensure that they are capable of responding to market needs and keeping pace of new trends. With the support of the Legco Finance Committee in June last year, we have established a dedicated team to undertake this initiative. We plan to report the progress of work to the Legco Panel on IT and Broadcasting in mid-two oh one seven. On the front of creative industries, we have over the past two years injected four hundred million, two hundred and twenty million dollars respectively into the Create Smart Initiative and the Film Development Fund. We will continue to provide financial support to the trade through these funding schemes for supporting the development of creative industries. This year marks the twentieth anniversary of the establishment of the Hong Kong SAR. We will organize our sponsored series of activities to showcase the strengths and achievements of Hong Kong's creative industries and take the opportunity to strengthen cross-territory collaboration of different industries and promote exchange and business networking. These include design exhibitions, Hong Kong film shows, fashion shows, exhibitions on the works of Hong Kong comic artists, and the Hong Kong Response Exhibition of the Venice Biennale International Architecture Exhibition. To promote the long-term development of Hong Kong's creative industries, our work priorities in the years ahead will focus on market development and talent nurturing. On market development, from this year, we will organize burn road promotional tours to countries with market potential such as Iran, Indonesia, Malaysia, India, etc. to attract film producers to come to Hong Kong for post-production and location filming and production facilitation services. On talent nurturing, apart from ongoing programs such as the Design Incubation Program and Fashion Incubation Program, we will in the coming two to three years collaborate with the film industry to run training programs regularly with a total of two hundred places to provide practical training or internship opportunities for frontline talent in the production and post-production sectors of the film industry. We will also support ten proficienters in in the post-production sector in each of the next three years to further their studies or undertake internship overseas. My colleagues and I stand ready to answer questions from members on the estimates. Thank you. Miss Elvin Young, you have four minutes. Thank you. I'd like to talk about reply number seventy-two on the new broadcasting house of RTHK. And in twenty fourteen, the Legco Nico vetoed the funding application for the new broadcasting house and after that, we have not seen any plans from RTHK. And we, I have asked this at the Legco Panel, and I would like to ask this question again. And during heavy rainstorm, the RTHK building was flooded. So does the government have any plans to apply for funding from Legco in the coming future? In early two oh one four, at the CNI Panel of Legco, we did not receive support at Legco, and after that, we did a lot of work. And it's not easy to come up with a viable solution that's also cost-effective and supported by members because costs are constantly rising. That's why we face more challenging issues than we expected. The RTHK would follow the capital works procedures of the government in its new broadcasting house. Once the internal work is completed, they would follow up on the project. I'd like to invite the Director of Broadcasting to brief us on the details. Mr. Long Kai Wing, thank you. On the new broadcasting house, we are working proactively with relevant government departments in conducting planning again. And one of the options is to retain the existing building or the joint user building. And we want to speed up the work according to the existing procedures and hopefully we can have a draft plan as soon as possible before we proceed to public consultation. The current term administration is coming to its end. And for other infrastructures projects, the government has been very proactive and they have been working extremely hard. And they can secure whatever funds they need from Legco. But for RTHK, it has been a few years. The Director is telling us that it's complicated. Of course, it's complicated. XLL is complicated, the Hong Kong Chui Macau Bridge is complicated, even though it's not related to your bureau. So did Mr. Gregory so run into a lot of, run into challenges? Please enlighten us. Does it mean that the CDB was bullying RTHK? Can you share any timelines with us? The complexity of the project is that while in two oh one four, we came up with a detailed proposal and how we could contain the costs, but at that time, the members wanted us to further reduce or cut the costs. So if we came back with another plan, we had to answer members' requests and it was rather challenging because the plan we put forward last time was already comprehensive. So this time, we have to come up with a plan that is cost-effective. Is there any timeline? We would try to speed up the work based on the established procedures. Mr. Chow Smo.
I'd like to talk about reply number thirty-two on internet access in remote areas. As you know, a lot of legislators receive a lot of complaints, and at the Complaints Division, there's also a case on this. But all along, the Communications Authority and the CDB have not come up with answers. I asked whether there are any surveys on areas with slow internet access, and the answer was that no such surveys were done. Apart from relying on existing operators to rely, to improve their services, you said that they have been proactive, but the residents have not seen that. And at outlying, well, at outlying islands and the new parts of new territories, the problem is serious. And can the government provide shared wires or channels in order to access some remote areas? Can these shared channels be provided by the government to overcome the problem? They, the operators welcome such move, but the government never said whether this is a viable answer to overcome this issue. So can you tell us whether you have considered this solution or any other more creative approaches?
In our reply, we have said clearly what the current situation is. According to the Office of the Communications Authority, at least four fixed network operators are working to paving networks in remote areas to provide high-speed network access, and these two are Hong Kong Telecom and Hong Kong Broadband Network. And two other companies are also working on this. And the work is ongoing. So similar arrangements have been made in the past on these commercial channels. And Miss Lee, as the Tech Secretary said, our telecommunications market is fully open, and the market will dictate where operators would lay their networks. Commercial consideration is a crucial factor because both the government and neither the government or the OFCA are providing any subsidies. But as the Secretary said, four fixed network operators are working to provide fixed network access to seven hundred areas in the outlying islands and new territories. One-third of the seven hundred villages, one-third are already enjoying relatively fast fixed network services for the two new network operators. And the new networks they pave would be higher in speed. And with the introduction of two new operators, two existing operators were also pushed into action, and they will also create new networks. Can you give us some details of the plans of those two new operators? In terms of figures, we have already offered the information, but we are very happy to give more details on the plans of those two operators.
Ray Chen, in his opening remarks, the Secretary has talked about the digital audio broadcasting service of the RTHK. It will be discontinued within six months or as soon as practicable thereafter. When I first joined the sector, I witnessed its growth, and now it is going to meet its fate. Many people have said at the outset that it is not going to be feasible. Now, the government is going to surrender. I think it's a good thing because at least you are stopping the continuous losses suffered. Now, the DAB was commenced. Now it is going to be discontinued. I want to know about the total amount of money spent. Many citizens are complaining that at first, the administration has been promoting the purchase of all digital audio broadcasting radios. Now that sort of radios have to be kept in a museum. Can the administration give any reimbursement? And then back to the question about the new broadcasting house. The administration has talked about prioritizing the projects. Well, sometimes we haven't got sufficient notice for an item to move to the FC. We don't even get the seven days' notice. I'm not saying that you should ignore all sorts of procedures, but then if you have the will, you can proceed freely. Now, the site has been left idle, and three years have passed, and it is costing us money. And then the CEO elect Carrie Lam, when she visited RTHK during the electoral platform, criticized RTHK for being backward, saying that they were merely showing the stools. Now, you asked the RTHK to take over the channel from ATV, and yet you don't give them money. Now, for the digital audio broadcasting service, it will be terminated. But then for digital TV, if you don't want to see the stools being played on the screen and you don't want to have relay services from the CCTV only, you need to give them more money. So can I ask the Director of Broadcasting? How many official meetings have been held for this purpose? Have you ever have some soft consultation with the lawmakers? Now, there has been a change of Legislative Council members. Even Christopher Jung has gone. And for this term, you didn't know about the stance of the pro-establishment camp members. So have you ever consulted the views? Director or the Secretary? Mr. Chairman, in relation to the new broadcasting house, let me take up this question first because it's a matter of whether we have talked to legislators. Last year, we took over the TV channels from ATV, so for a period of time, we were very busy. At the same time, we had to consider the way forward, so we studied the matter actively. In relation to the new broadcasting house, that is how we can try our best to realize the plan of the new broadcasting house. One possibility being cooperating with other government departments, that is using a joint user building. Is the time up already? Please continue. First of all, we have to see which government department or departments may want to have a word with us so that we can explore the feasibility of sharing the same building. Well, where did you put the idea of a joint user building? We're trying our best to explore the idea. The idea of a judge user building is a question of maximizing the land available. Back then, the cost was reduced from six to five billion dollars, and still we didn't get your approval. So if we continue to insist that this building would only be used by RTHK, while at the same time, we need to reduce the cost, and there is a limit to which we can reduce our cost. So the idea of a George user building will have the advantage of maximizing the port ratio, for example. But then it takes time to develop the idea. We need to talk to the other government departments. Even if they are willing to cooperate with us, we need time. Before there is any indication of intention, it will be difficult for us to consult the public because it is still at the conceptual stage. If the building is for our use only, we should also consider in what ways can we further reduce the cost. Once we've got some ideas, we will consult the public and we will ask for the advice of electrical members.
N. Zheng. Thank you, Chairman. Regarding digital audio broadcasting, I want to know whether the service will be discontinued altogether, and what about the equipment? Will it be dismantled? I understand that they must have built many transmission stations.
Secretary. Well, for the commercial operators of digital audio broadcasting services, they have all stopped their DAB service. The only remaining is that from the RTHK. RTHK would discontinue the service as well, and then the service will go to the AM/FM platform. For the equipment and facilities, if they are purely for DAB, of course, they have to be dismantled.
Chairman, allow me to ask this question. We have the electromagnetic waves and whatnot. Well, many facilities are housed on the rooftop of our buildings. In many overseas countries, their governments are trying to combine these services. There is operators or service providers don't have to install the facilities on rooftop or on mountain top on their own. Usually, the governments would ask for the co-use of the facilities. We have seen data that excessive waves of such a nature will be harmful to our human health. And recently, it has been said that if you have got too many facilities of such a nature on the rooftop, then household members living on the top few floors may suffer from cancer. We are not too sure about that, but it is better to take a preventive stance. So are you going to consider the following? There is for service providers who need to use such electromagnetic waves, can you try your best to encourage them to share the facilities?
Secretary. We'll try to look at it from two ways. First of all, sharing the facilities so as to reduce the number of facilities installed individually by individual operators. And then another question is about the impact on human health. Well, when it comes to the transmission of telecommunications, we have been following the advice of the World Economic Organization. We have been adopting the same standards, and they have been adopted by many other advanced countries as well. Now, if we have got a number of facilities at a particular spot, we need to take the cumulative values into account just to make sure that our installations will meet the international requirements.
Yes, I understand. On its own, an installation may meet the requirement, but then if you start to have four together, then it means that the total value will be much enhanced. This is like if you consume a small amount of food, it has a small amount of radiation. But if you start to consume it on a daily basis, the cumulative effect may be harmful to your health. So I really hope that the government will start looking into this matter. Thank you. Next, Tanya Chen.
Thank you, Chair. CUTB CCI zero one seven. Again, it is about RTHK. But then that's about the ratio, sorry, zero seven one, is about the contract staff as well as the NCSC members as well as the service. Well, we can see that more than a quarter of the staff members are non-service contract staff. Probably some of them are non-skilled workers like cleansing workers or security staff. But then if I may take up this point, we have got the salaries for program officers, assistant program officers, program assistants, etc. I think the salary range is quite wide. For NCSC staff members, please answer this question. I want to know how you decided on the salary point, and I've lost track of a particular question. I remember that for NCSC staff members being converted into service, I think a specific number has been given. In twenty sixteen, there were nineteen service servants who were recruited. They were all recruited through open recruitment and were given to ranks and salaries like the senior program officer, assistant program officer, and ranks in other grades. So among the nineteen service servants who were recruited, can you disclose the information, namely how many of them were previously NCSC staff members and have now become service servants?
All right, Secretary. I would like to defer to the Director of Broadcasting. Thank you. For the last question, probably I have to provide information in writing because I am afraid I may not have the accurate figures with me. But as far as I can recall, for the year twenty seventeen, there were nine posts, nine service posts, and in fact, it was a matter of conversion of the NCSC posts into CS posts. As to the nineteen service servants in the year twenty sixteen, I'm afraid that I cannot recall the accurate information of the cuff. Well, in simple terms, when we decide on the salaries of the NCSC staff, we follow the guidelines of the CSP. We take into account the market conditions, and we take into account the duties involved, and we try to look at the comparable ranks in the service, and then we'll look at the terms and conditions of service offered. Now, it is a bit complicated here because for the RTHK, we have got the assistant program officer, program officer, and senior program officer posts. They cover many different sort of positions in the television section or in the radio division. They cover different tasks. But then when you simply look at the post title and start to compare, it will be difficult to sort of elaborate in the answer because for many NCSC staff members, they might have been with us for a long time. So it all depends on what happened at the time they joined us.
Mr. Ted Ho, four minutes. I have a few questions. First of all, zero seven two, which is also about the new broadcasting house of RTHK. Members have asked about the new BH, and the government offered reasons why it's not being, it has not been materials li, materials, materialize yet, and the government cited challenges and complications, and no timeline is given. A member said the government might be affected by the diverse views of different camps and parties, so I'd like to give you the chance to say it again. With the lack of time schedule for the new BH B two two policy costs or other considerations in two oh one four, ourselves and RTHK lobbied for the support from different camps and members, and the proposal was compiled after lengthy consideration, but it wasn't approved.
And the proposal was compiled after lengthy consideration, but it wasn't approved. And we asked for a hundred million dollars and or ten billion dollars. And after we were requested to cut costs, we trimmed it down to 5.3 billion dollars, but still it wasn't approved. The new broadcasting house is a major project and there are different factors to be considered as the director for broadcasting said. One of the ways to cut costs is to share the building with other departments. And even that has its complications. So we are trying to identify a viable solution. And we will see whether LECO would support it. So we must be very careful and we have to manage the value for money. As you would imagine, this is a very challenging task that requires time. And we already trimmed the budget down to 5.3 billion last time. And if further trimming is required, this is extremely challenging. But we will continue to work hard with RTHK. I'll move on to my next question. We have the community involvement broadcasting funnel, CIBF. After the DAB services are terminated, what's your plan on this fun? As the director of broadcasting said, we will work with different stakeholders. And hopefully, these programs would be aired in the existing AM and FM channels. Mr. Leng. On the CIBF, after a few years of testing, it has proved highly successful. We have turned it into a regular program since due to huge success. And it was broadcasted at digital channels. But now we are going to increase the number of hours per week to sixteen. These programs are certainly beneficial to our society, especially disadvantaged groups and ethnic minorities. For example, one of our programs is called I'm an African, starring African actors. And we taught them how to produce a program. And they told us that they feel like Hongkongers even though they are Africans. And within a month or two, the programs will be aired at AM and FM channels. For non-Cantonese programs, well, we hope that the audience would accept them. We have languages like Indonesian, Nepali, Tamil, etc. Next, Mr. Hodean Chow. Thank you. I'd like to ask about reply number 023 on the Film Development Fund. In the government's reply, they listed out the number of applications approved and the amounts of loan guarantee approved under the Film Guarantee Fund between 2003 and 2007. And after the Film Development Fund was launched, no one applied for the Film Guarantee Fund anymore. So that's why they terminated the fund in 2015. I'd like to ask about this FDF and FGF. And the trade seems to prefer the Film Development Fund in financing their productions. I'd like to know the differences between the two funds from 2003 to 2007 for the amounts of loan guarantee approved. And these loans should have been approved. Do you know whether these loans were fully repaid?
Mr. Jerry Liu, head of Great Hong Kong. The question was about the Film Guarantee Fund or FGF and the Film Development Fund implemented in 2007 and the differences between the two funds. Simply speaking, in the FGF, the government provided guarantees for loans taken out from banks. Film investors still had to bear the full risk of film production, including the box office proceeds, etc. On the other hand, the Film Production Financing Scheme under the Film Development Fund, the government will pay up to forty percent of the production fee as an investment endowment. So in that case, the government is actually an investor and it has and it holds some certain stakes in the film. And part of the risk of investment is delegated to the government as the financier. So that's the biggest difference between the two schemes. And starting from 2003 to 2007, the government provided loan guarantees. And Mr. Chow would like to know whether the loans provided were fully repaid to banks. The answer was with the exception of one application in which the applicant withdrew the application. All the applications listed had their loans fully repaid and the government did not have to take up any risks. Mr. Chow, smart. I'd like to ask about reply number 29 on the 5G spectrum. At earlier panel meetings, we discussed this issue. And we were concerned whether it would take the Communications Authority a few years to reassign the spectra. They recently ensured that at certain spectra bands, for example, 3.4 to 3.7 gigahertz, the bands would be made available. With the exception of these, of this issue, we are also concerned about analog TV frequencies which would be taken back in 2020. Would there be further delays? We were concerned that between the border of Hong Kong and the mainland, there might be interferences. Are there any plans to get the bands back by 2020? And some people told me that in Guangdong province, they have stopped assigning these bands for analog TV. And they have started working or adopting digital transmission in order to minimize interferences. So is there any progress on these scopes of work? And by 2020, can we get these frequency bands back? We have been working actively with the relevant mainland units. And hopefully, we can receive digital dividend as soon as possible. And we will certainly have to work with the mainland authorities in order to secure such dividend. And there is no update on this at this point, but we are communicating with the relevant authorities in the mainland. I'm not sure if I made myself completely clear. I realize that coordination is important. But if this continues to dwell on, are there technical aspects you can consider? Did you talk to them about a possible delay in the implementation timeframe? Well, the target is 2020. The mainland would complete its planning by that time. And by then, we will have the chance to reach the goal. In terms of district coordination and other solutions, we are happy to take in your views. If the mainland would only complete its planning by 2020 instead of completing the work by that time. But while we are going to see more delays, very likely, does it mean that they would be able to return the frequency bands by 2020? 2020 is the target for closing down the services. And we are identifying ways in which we can secure the digital dividend. Ms. Kodyamou, any question? If not, that's all for this session. Thank you very much.